Landscape blocks or whatever.
So they said, let's just run that thing underneath the ramp, trip it in. Get rid of him first.
I don't want to screw it up now, but we can pull this up. Well, I mean, they moved it. We can pull this up and put it back where it was and we can pull that up. Well, I'm not going to mess with it right now. If we blow everything out, we'd be in trouble, right?
Oh, yeah. Well, they're changing it so much over there.
Just get two clients. It's crazy.
Sure is. I know. I'm with you there. It's just right here in downtown. I don't know if I'd want to be on that.
You had to be up for your brother.
That's right.
Much nicer for us to hear out here at all. That's a half hour. Fan had it go over to, oh, if you need, I didn't know where it was.
Oh, yeah, right there on, uh, is on Taylor.
Six seventy on Taylor.
Yeah, Taylor. Yeah, I've been over there.
Once you did, once you did, too bad.
The, uh, for my ninth grade year in high school, I went to East High School, which is right in front of it. Yeah, I went there for one year. I hated it. Hated it.
Did you get passed downtown on those?
Yeah, yeah.
I just knew the west side kind of going up. Jameson Hilliard. I was used to that. She says it didn't end last.
Right on time. Pried my heart. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Two minutes ago, you did good.
Good thing I'm not wearing that one.
Who are they skirmishing? At Sederbro? High school girl?
How many people have you left? What'd you expect? Really, where everything's nice.
Let's hit the apple. Yeah, you were still here.
Why did you see you?
Sharon, you good? I called meeting order. I make a plea statement for the pledge in a moment of silence, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, do we have roll call, please?
President Peters?
Here.
Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Here.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
Councilman McDaniel?
Present.
Councilwoman Trainor? Councilman Norman?
Here.
Okay, did everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes from, uh, October seventeenth meeting? Questions or concerns? All in favor to approve?
Aye.
Same sign. Up next is, uh, we have a public hearing. They get a motion to exit regular meeting and enter into public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
Uh, public hearing, uh, ordinance one eighty-four dash twenty-four. An ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area. Oh, could I get roll call on that? I'm sorry.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Affirmative.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainor?
Yes.
Again, this is, uh, ordinance one eighty-four dash twenty-four, uh, an ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area, also known as DORA. Uh, is anybody out there that would like to speak on behalf of that? If you would, uh, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. Uh, my name is Cole Antle. I live at thirty-nine forty-five Parkside Court in Hilliard, Ohio. I just wanted to, um, give a quick, uh, pitch of why or what I've seen from DORA, uh, being in Hilliard. I know I technically don't live here in London. Obviously, I have invested interest within the downtown area, being of Westwood Collective. But seeing the downtown flourish through a DORA, I think is very important to bring here. Uh, I know it comes with a negative connotation of, A, it might attract some drunkenly behavior downtown, or it might not, uh, bring up the vibrancy. It is everything but that. Uh, from DORA coming into Hilliard, it has been nothing but great. Uh, you might think it attracts kids. It actually attracts more kids and family life. Um, attracts more business downtown because people are drinking, they're, they're bringing their drinks elsewhere, they're going to shop, uh, they're wanting to spend money downtown. It brings them a reason to come downtown. And they bring their families with them. So there's a bunch of kids playing around. Um, a great example would be on Thursday nights in downtown Hilliard in summertime. Um, there's a big concert series and a bunch of people get drinks at Crooked Can and they'll go shop at Urban Market, which Lauren is the owner of, um, and she is here in support, uh, because it truly does help her store on those days. So, um, I know there's negative connotations around it, uh, in some people's minds, but as somebody who looks at it and experiences it in real time in Hilliard, um, it has been nothing but great for our community. And I truly believe if you, if you want a downtown to flourish, uh, this is a great way to make it happen and bring people downtown for a good reason. So, um.
Yeah. How many Doras does Hilliard have?
How many Doras?
Yeah.
Um, I think, I believe it's on Thursday night?
Well, it's every night.
Yeah, every night of the week.
But is it just one area or do they have a several areas?
No, so it's locked, I guess.
No, no, I was just wondering.
With DORA, you have like a blast sign basically at the end of the batteries. So if anything would enter those batteries, you can carry your cover and that helps. There's probably a print can like dirt. It goes from Hilliard all the way to like.
Yeah, but to your point, there's one designated area that encompasses, and not like pockets.
And they also have a beer garden, right?
Correct. There's a beer garden there. Uh, there's probably five or six different bars.
Do, do we have any plans to have a beer garden area down there?
Uh, that's probably something I could speak more to. Um, there, there are some good plans, uh, for something of that nature, not a beer garden specifically, but in, in outdoor space that, uh, we have a, a spot that we're, we have in mind, um, for that. And, and I would, uh, also share, it'd be, um, ideal, in an ideal scenario, uh, we would love it for it to encapsulate the old hotel, um, in the, in the downtown area as well, uh, at least out to there. Um, I know past that, obviously, you're getting a train track involved, so that's probably not the best idea, but up until that point would be great.
Well, you still get a, you still got a train track involved to get to the hotel.
Right.
I, and can I follow up on Mr. McDaniel's question? Does Hilliard have more than one DORA?
One designated?
They just have the one?
Yeah, they have one air, uh, 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 I think, uh, what you're asking is like, is there one designated area for it?
Yeah, you just have one.
Correct, there's one.
Columbus has several
Yeah.
and different areas of the city. So you just have one.
Are you seeing like five alcohol? No.
No, I'm saying the area itself, that you designate as DORA, you just have one.
Correct, and Hilliard, and it encapsulates the entire downtown.
Okay.
If I could, uh, in the Hilliard area, have you ever noticed, uh, any trouble where the police have had to be called? Or any disturbances where anybody has gotten disorderly, out of order, uh, or anything like that at all?
No, there, there are, there are policemen there, uh, basically to block off roads and, and, and ensure stuff like that doesn't happen, but in my experience, and, and we just, uh, were the sponsor for the entire DORA, the summer series, um, this year in Hilliard. So I was there from the beginning of it to the end, every single Thursday night, uh, which is the biggest night for it, and I didn't experience anything at all, just honestly, just a bunch of people having a good time, um, but not too much of a good time.
Okay.
So following up on his question, do you think enforcement is, is key?
I don't know if enforcement's key. Their presence, uh, I think is, is a, is a good thing to have, um, just because it detracts from people getting too crazy. Um, and, and it's a little different, obviously, in Hilliard because we shut down the roads. I don't, I, I, I'd imagine that's not the case here, uh, for a Thursday night, but obviously, like I said, Doras every night, um, in Hilliard, and I've never had, we've never had issues, um, in the Hilliard area any night of the week. So.
And you, you mentioned to the hotel, which I asked that at the last council meeting, if that was a consideration because we don't know what's going in the old hotel. Can you reveal anything or tell us why that would be a good idea to extend down to the hotel?
Um, ideally, we, we would like to put something in there that would benefit from it, um, and in terms of a restaurant or, um, a, uh, a coffee shop, some, not, maybe not a coffee shop, obviously, but, um, we don't have a set plan for it yet, uh, but it would be awesome to have that option and, and attract a business here to know that, hey, if we put, put you in here, you can also experience the, the, the benefit that a door brings. Um, obviously, it gets a little less hard to attract, uh, somebody like a restaurant should they not be included in DORA, um, because they would, I'd probably not benefit as much.
So the, the point isn't necessarily there's going to be a bar there.
Yeah, we.
But a business that's open that would allow patrons to walk in and extend the area so they could walk in there also.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank.
Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, thank you. Um, a couple of things. Uh, Councilman McDaniel's asked about enforcement. You guys only have the enforcement on the Thursday night when you have those big events. Right, it's not every night they don't have the police out there, but they probably still make a presence like ours would. So it'd be more like when we have the shop hops or a festival downtown, which we have police presence for those things. Um, and I think he would be asking for, if you guys are deciding about passing this, to amend the map to make it go to the second set of tracks, which, you know, would probably be a good idea, especially if, as we work through the, uh, trails, because that is where the, the bike trail, bike path will go through, will be that quote unquote second set of tracks. So you guys would be able to make that motion to extend it to the second set of tracks. And then if it passes, that when we do everything, we put our map in, we would just add that section to that. I also, you know, I've made this, uh, stat before, but just to let you guys know, you know, we talked about the DORA and we sent out surveys to all the downtown businesses and about the implementation of the DORA and kind of asked them what their thoughts were, and we got thirty-eight responses back, and ninety-five percent of those thirty-eight responses were in support of a DORA in the downtown area, and that is the actual businesses themselves saying, we would, we would like a DORA down here. Out of thirty-eight responses, ninety-five percent.
And to kind of piggyback back off that, uh, if you include it to the second tracks, you're now encapsulating a, a lot of new businesses that are, that are in need of this, this downtown attraction that this could be. Um, so I, I would highly recommend it, um, if possible.
Michael?
So, if I read the DORA right, um, the businesses can opt out or opt in. In your experience over where you are, what would you say, just, just a ballpark figure, what do you think the percentage is of the people who opted out in that strip that you have?
You know, now, when, when thinking of a business in the downtown area that has opted out, um, I, I can't think of one. Most businesses then stay open because they, like, there's a lot of walk-in traffic on those days because they're able, like I said, to take a drink and.
Now, before you put the DORA in, uh, the business hour, have, have you seen the business hours shift later into the evening on?
Yes, I have, and I've, I've seen a lot more, there's a lot more foot traffic in the, in the downtown Hilliard area that before DORA, there wasn't, um, any, and like I said, and Lauren can speak to it a little bit more, but those nights, um, especially on the Thursday nights, those are the best nights for businesses in the downtown area.
As well as having one in Hilliard, Ohio. And Finley opted into DORA, I mean, it's been at least before twenty twenty. And I would say that, like, when you allow somebody just to even grab a drink and walk through the doors, more people come out. It's like date night girlfriends, like you just grab a glass of wine and just go walk down the street. It's not a bad thing, and I think a lot of people look at it as like everyone's just trying to get drunk and go out. It's like, no, somebody just wants to grab a drink, stroll down the road, go check out all the things. It's not, it's, we even in Finley have never had a situation that it's been somebody with a DORA drink. It's usually somebody that's not walking into it, like a store or doing something that's possibly a problem. So.
Uh, question, the one, well, either one of you. Compared to before you had DORA, as to what you have now, can you give me a number of businesses that have come in, either restaurant, any type of business at all? Can you give me type of percentage that it has drawn into the DORA area?
Say in Hilliard, that DORA started around when we all started our stores there. So I guess I can't fully give a number on that, but I would say in Finley, Ohio, since DORA has started, we have eleven, now, we have eleven retail stores, and before that, there was only like six of us.
And I, and I also don't know if it's the, the idea of attracting businesses, it's, it's more of a fact of helping the current businesses that are there. They have their sales so they stay. Because I think as soon as you get this connotation, if a business fails, that all, no matter what you put in there, it's going to fail. You, you never want that in a downtown because then that doesn't attract other businesses. So I think a DORA is more of a thing of how do you help the current businesses here? Um, and once they thrive, that attracts the businesses.
And I would say that's been a big thing in Hilliard because we have a lot of people that will have a drink in their hand and they're like, are we allowed to bring this in? And I was like, yes, there's a green DORA sticker. If you see any of these green stickers, it means like, yes, you can bring your drink in. And they're like, oh, great. And they're like, oh, my gosh, we totally need to have a girl so we can like bring all of our friends here and do this again. So I feel like you can't look at it as a negative thing.
Probably get a.
You said, um, the DORA opened and then you opened the business in Hilliard, was that right?
So door, it all happened around the same time. I think DORA was all in play in Hilliard around when I was opening my store there.
So my question would be, did the DORA in Hilliard impact you opening a business there or?
A little bit because to be honest, um, I don't want to say I'm the reason, but in Hilliard, I did ask them. I said, do you guys have DORA? And at first they were like, no. And then I kind of talked them through some of the things and like the steps of putting up signs and all that stuff. And then they adopted it because obviously with restaurants and bars and all that stuff comes retail. And so that was something, I mean, I remember asking you that when I was opening a store there. I said, do you guys have DORA? And at first he's like, I don't know what that is. And then I was, and then this all started happening in that same timeframe. So. Yeah.
Probably get more husbands out there shopping too if you put a drink or two in their hand.
Very true. I mean, they do find the chair, but they, they do show up.
So we're saving marriages.
Yes.
Any other questions? Could you state your name and address?
Lauren McKinnis. Um, I live at three nine one five Parkside Court in Hilliard, Ohio.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak on the door?
Hello, my name is Michael C. Norman. I'm living at one eighty-eight South Oak Street here in London, and, uh, I requested a few public records when I heard last meeting that.
Mike, this is public hearing for this ordinance?
For the DORA.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure. The, I requested a few public records regarding to the, basically things I'd expect to see with a DORA. I interviewed a few department heads at the police department and asked whether or not they'd expect to see a substantial increase in the, basically alcoholic-based crimes in the area. And from all the research I did at local, you know, municipalities our size, the DORA seemed to have a negligible impact on alcohol-based crimes, OVIs, DUIs, um, open containers, well, open containers obviously would get eliminated by DORA, but, uh, I would also like to speak and say that I believe a DORA would be a great addition to the downtown area in London. Thank you.
Elizabeth Branson, five hundred Drayson Avenue, London, Ohio. When I first read the article in the Messenger, I couldn't believe my eyes. I said out loud, what are you thinking? Having never tasted alcohol in my entire life, I naturally am against it a hundred percent. But I realize my conviction cannot be forced upon people who drink. But there should be a time and a place for consumption. Strolling around the streets of London is not the time or place. Other than my biblical reasons against alcohol, which can be argued pro and con, I must say in Bible times, there was different, different concerns involving water situations, no refrigeration, medicinal usage. There are also many warnings regarding alcohol in the Bible. But I have other concerns regarding consumption of alcohol all over America and, yes, in London. Number one, very high, if not number one, results of traffic accidents, alcohol. Number two, very high results of domestic violence, alcohol. Number three, drug and alcohol usage related to many crimes, alcohol. Number four, rape, child molestation, and many other crimes related, alcohol. It is a proven fact that alcohol lowers inhibitions and thoughtability. An estimated fifteen million in the U.S. have an alcohol disorder. More than sixty-five million report binge drinking. Teen alcohol kills four thousand seven hundred persons and more each year. Other negative results of drinking. Alcohol affects the brain. It can change the mood, the behavior, and the effects and ability to think clearly and to move safely. It reduces restraints of behaviors that might be inappropriate, dangerous, or taboo. So, who is going to monitor these persons strolling along the streets of London? What will prevent persons from bringing alcohol outside and sharing it with underage persons? Who will monitor persons drinking and driving? After all, they have to arrive somehow, probably in a vehicle. How much alcohol is too much to drive? After all the hours are eleven AM to ten PM daily, who monitors all of this consumption? It appears to me the negative far outnumberes the positive to stroll and drink. I am concerned not only for myself, but for innocent persons, women, children, teens, other persons who might be struggling with addictions. Why can't persons desiring to consume alcohol be content to stay in their establishments that welcome them? But I should not be forced to accept nor feel uncomfortable walking alone in downtown London. The last time I checked, I still have the freedom to stroll downtown and feel safe. I'm so glad I have, can have fun and be happy and feel the joy of the Lord without a mind-altering drug in my body. Please reconsider all possibilities, positive and negative, before passing this controversial application. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak during this?
Hi, Eve Breedlove, executive assistant, you knew me. Um, I wanted to speak because I don't drink. It's just a choice that I made. I don't, I don't like alcohol. I don't drink. Um, but I'm in support of the DORA. I've been to DORA places. I've been to non-DORA places. DORA places are just built for community better. Uh, they tend to be a more welcoming environment. They have the, the seating, they have more activities, more events. It's more of a draw. Um, while I don't drink, my husband does. So somewhere like in a DORA environment allows for the both of us to have enjoyment with the activity that we're doing. Um, I'm not going to go to a bar. It's just not my jam. But I do like hanging out with my husband. So in a DORA, he's able to grab a drink. I'm able to go to a shop, which is my jam. So I just wanted to come up here and give a perspective from somebody that doesn't drink but does support the DORA.
Thank you. John?
We had some of the same questions when we started to sell beer at the Strawberry Festival. And we've had it for about five, six years now, and we've never had one problem, and we have police there, and nobody's been picked up or anything like that. And I was kind of against it at first, but it's worked out so well, and people are very good about it. Nobody comes back, and nobody's been drunk or carried on. I understand how it can be and how everything's bad. It's kind of, we had like many doors, you know, for three days, and it was, it was very, worked out very well.
Anything else? To give motion to exit the public hearing and enter in, back into the regular meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Trainor?
Yep.
Councilman Hayes, Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Okay, on to, uh, communications and announcements. There are none. Uh, audience concerns. Uh, we do have a couple, um, Michael. Yep. State your name and address, please.
Howdy again. My name is Michael C. Norman at one eighty-eight South Oak Street, and the first thing I wanted to bring up was the ordinance mentioned last meeting to assist in the fixing of tree damage to our sidewalks. And as a citizen, one of my concerns is whether or not we'll be able to put regulations forth into that ordinance that would cause it to be some sort of offense to have, uh, either tree limbs hanging a certain distance from the sidewalk or road. I took a personal walkabout through the first three wards of London, and the one that concerned me most was Ward Two, uh, being that I'm only six feet tall, there's a lot of trees that, you know, get in the way of the pedestrian experience. However, I was thinking about using, or rather, I wouldn't use the money, but the money from fund two hundred thirty, the street, I believe it's construction, maintenance, and roads. That fund to date has about three hundred thousand dollars left in it before it dips below the average percentage of money. I requested the, uh, records over the last five years. Whether or not we'd be able to provide a service akin to bulk pickup to try to deal, well, something like that for trees, to deal with the damage to the sidewalks, the overhanging limbs, and just general maintenance of the pedestrian experience. That was my first, yeah, minute twenty in. That's my first concern. My second concern was after pulling the public records for the street and waste departments of London, the first thing I noticed was the emergency services departments are incredibly low. Um, I interviewed a few department heads and the police department specifically, uh, listed that, or rather, I took the quote that the, I believe, income tax rate was lower than two percent is what the person reported, when it's not, we're not up to snuff with municipalities our size, we're a little lower. And when I went to interview the department heads of the fire department, I asked them whether or not if they were granted some sort of tax levy, whether or not they'd be able to use that money, and I was given a resounding yes because. And I was given a resounding yes because, on average, every year, the Fire Department spends 97% of its budget. And I can almost tell by looking at it that they don't stop spending because they want to. They do it because they have to. And when I see the surplus money in other departments, I wonder why there hasn't been some sort of budget cut for the departments to have more money when the departments that need money don't have it. Aside from that, though, unless there's a response from the council, that would be my piece.
Well, the only thing I would say was our income taxes are on par with just about everybody in the state at two, two and a half because we also pay a 1% income tax at the school.
That...okay, good. I've got a little bit more time. That is fantastic to hear on my end. The more important issue for me, as opposed to the income tax level, because being unemployed, that doesn't exactly affect me, what's more important to me is the departments citywide that don't use all of the money they have. And they consistently get a lot of the amount of fundage a year that I hear in other situations such as the department should be using funds and/or redistributing them back into the city to other departments that would use them. I don't know how we would go to approach that, but...
When you did your research, did you...the other...if I'm understanding, what you're saying is, is your concern is the Fire Department uses 97% of their budget every year, leaving them only 3%. And so what you're saying is, when you did your research, other departments have more than 3% left over?
Oh, they have far more than 3%. That was the most...the Police Department isn't doing much better. They usually have...and I took the average over the last five years. I sent emails to everyone on council, I believe. The Police Department uses about 89% every year. The Fire Department, 97%. That leaves them with 3% and 11% prospectively. The Street Department, I believe...I've got another about 30 seconds. The Street Department usually has upwards of 50% left or whatever percentage it be, because I could pull it up, but I'm timed. So it's the Police Department only having 11% of their budget left. The other departments I researched with the public records requests double that amount of surplus easily, easily.
Thank you.
Oh, and one more finishing closing remark. I also noticed when I reviewed the agenda tonight that there are several resolutions regarding appropriations of funds and whatnot. One put forward, I believe by Greg Eads, was the Police Department needs a new server. And when asked, both the departments, Fire and Police, said that their number-one upkeep cost is maintenance and upgrades to keep up with basically technological advancement and whatnot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, are you wanting to speak, audience concerns, or did you just want to talk at the public hearing? You signed the...I talked for audience concerns?
I did.
Okay, that's...thank you. All right, on to committee reports. Greg?
The budget...pardon me. Personnel Budget and Finance Committee met on October 21st. Here's a couple of things we'll share. The overall revenue for the year is $14.8 million. The overall expenses were about $18.2. However, if you take out the $6,143,000 that we transferred out with the water in the sewer departments and gave that to Mid-Ohio, our expenses are just a little over $12 million, so we are ahead for the year. We have a number of things that we're going to discuss tonight. All...almost all is new business. Just a couple of things that I wanted to look at this very quickly. So salary employees pay scales, strength ordinance, the server was mentioned. The contract for the Fire Department's going to come up. Street Department truck, the skate park and basketball court, and some other things that are going to come up, especially with the Tax Department. So I think just about everything is going to be addressed. That was new business. However, the next finance meeting is going to be held on Monday, November 18th, 5:30. We're going to try to do it next door. We're going to see. We may have to move. I have to expect...or I expect that we're going to have a first look at the budget at that time. I also expect to have conversations about new tax increment funding agreements and a new community authority agreement that are currently being reviewed by the Law Director. The Law Director will be giving an overview of these documents, she stated, and will be able to ask questions for clarification. I think everybody...I think it's going to be important everybody goes to that so you can understand what these are. If you have a chance to come to the finance meeting, I think you'll learn a lot at that meeting about these new items that are going to come before us as a council later on. And we should also be able to decide, hopefully, if we're going to pursue bonds to pay for the new Police Department or whether they're going to stay with the loan. There's a discussion that occurred about that, that we may be able to get bonds at a rate very similar to what the loan would be. But if we get the bonds, we can start construction earlier. The loans may take quite a while to come through. So I hope we have that discussion also. So again, that'll be Monday, November 18th, 5:30 next door.
Thank you. Brent?
Public Service, Tuesday, the 12th, at 5 o'clock next door. Where I think we're going to be tackling sidewalks and public safety at 6:00.
Rich?
Public Safety Meeting, Tuesday, 13th, 6 o'clock, conference room.
Andy?
I have nothing.
Shannon?
Our whole meeting is on the agenda for later this evening.
John?
I have nothing.
Michael?
Nothing.
On to City official reports.
Good evening. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. We've had a...it's been very busy with the comprehensive plan lately. We did host our open house last night. All the sessions have seemed to be very productive and getting a lot done. We have added a section to our website dedicated to the comprehensive plan to give information and updates. So you can find that at londonohio.gov. So I encourage citizens to get on there and check that out. And if you have any questions, please reach out to us. City of London Trick or Treat was held on Halloween from 6:00 to 8:00. There was a few sprinkles, but overall, it was a pretty nice night, and it was very busy. Parks and Rec said that it was the busiest they've ever seen Main Street with their little booth that they had down there. And some of the police officers and firefighters told me the same thing. So I do want to thank the London Division of Fire and EMS, the London Police Department, and Parks and Rec Department for participating in Trick or Treat and also in so many trunk or treats. They were out at a lot of them. So their community outreach is just fantastic, and it just gets better and better. So I want to thank them for doing that and being part of the community and getting out there and shaking hands and talking to kids and just being part of the community. The City of London Parks and Rec Department, I know a lot of you guys came. You might have talked about it at the last meeting, but we did have the Pumpkinpalooza. Had a great event. If anybody came down there, you saw how amazing it was and all the different things that were there, from the Go Petting Zoo to the magician, to Councilman Norman and Councilman Eads both dressed up. I mean, all in all, it was a fantastic day with a lot of things and so much positive outreach and positive feedback. So thank you to everyone, Eve and Parks and Rec, for putting that on and organizing that. It was a fantastic event, especially for the first year. So next year, bigger and better. We learned a few things this year, as you do when you do an event for the first time. But next year will be bigger and better, and we're excited for that. As Councilman Eads talked about, we were able to complete the union contract negotiations with Fire and EMS. So you have that contract in front of you tonight for consideration. Same as AFSMI, you have 30 days to ratify, so just wanted to bring that up. But I want to thank our team once again and as well as London Division of Fire and EMS and IAFF. Another pretty quick negotiation. And it went very well. They had some things they needed to take care of. We had some things we wanted to take care of. And it's a very fair contract for both sides. And it was very good negotiations. Negotiations can get kind of contentious at times. And knock on wood, we've had two pretty good ones. So hopefully, police will be fantastic, and we'll be starting that next week. Over the past month, I have been able to attend quite a few events. London Correctional was 100th anniversary and their volunteer banquet. Homecoming Parade, the Pumpkinpalooza, the Bonanza, the Chamber Bonanza, Junior Achievement Inspire Event. We had ribbon cuttings for oak and ivory as well as wagons groomers. And I was at about eight trunk or treats. So if you need any candy, it's down in the office because I stole about half of my son's because he does not need it all. So thank you to all the organizers for having me out to all of that. I also want to say congratulations to all the Fall Student athletes, especially London varsity volleyball. If you didn't see, that team made it all the way to the regional finals. And that's the farthest that LHS volleyball has ever made it. So congratulations to those ladies and going so far in the state tournament. Also, the high school football team, as we know, ended the season 10-0 with a perfect record. And they had a first-round playoff win. And we will be hosting Chamonix-Julien tomorrow at 7:00 for the second round of the playoffs. So I encourage citizens and everybody to come out and root those guys on. They're having a great season, and it's going to be a tough game. So come out and root on your London Red Raiders. I also want to take a second and thank Allseal Seal Coating. That is the business that is also with Allscapes, Brad Gorman's company. They came out and they donated their time, their labor, and their materials to seal all the walking paths, the old basketball court, and the parking lot at Cowling Park and restripe it, and it looks beautiful down there. Such a huge undertaking, and it's usually pretty expensive to get something like that done. So for him to step up and want to help the city and donate all of that was just an amazing gesture. And I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Gorman and his company and all his employees for coming out and doing that for us because it just looks fantastic. It looks so nice. Go down and check that out. Monday is Veterans Day, so I want to thank all the veterans for all they've done for us. Not only today, not only on Veterans Day, but every day. Just let them know that we honor them and we are grateful, and we cannot thank the veterans enough for the gift that they have given us, and that is the gift of freedom. I also want to recognize their family members and their friends. So we know that they too make sacrifices, and they have to endure the deployments and worry about the safety of their loved ones and just overall providing support. And, you know, sometimes have to be a single parent while they're gone. So their strength should not go unnoticed. Molo Fun Fact is the number 30,000. My friend Joey, which is also known as Sir Yacht, came back to town. He's a social media influencer. He came back and we did another video. This is the third video that we've done about London. We had some fun around town and was able to highlight three local businesses. We went in Mad Cow, Provisions Co., and Hartzlers. And so right now, it has about 30,000 to 40,000 views over all the social media platforms. So it's pretty neat. Like I said, this was the third one. We're already talking about what we're going to do next. So I just want to thank him, you know, to be able to use his platform to come out here and highlight us so people, not just in London or Ohio or the United States, but all over the world, get to see London and what we have to offer. And finally, I haven't been here since we beat Jonathan Alder in football. So we did retain the Mayor's Cup for the fourth consecutive year, and I'm excited. I text Mayor Carney today and told her I have not gotten the picture of her at her council meeting with that London football shirt on. So I'm waiting on that. And finally, I am excited that we'll be getting out of here at 8:05 tonight so we can make it to Thursday Night Football to watch the Bengals. So hoo day with that. And does anyone have any questions for me?
Mr. Mayor, I do. 8:05, good luck. I'm going to talk for the next hour just to keep you here.
I would expect nothing less.
No, regarding the community survey that's been going on, I believe...Is Eve still here? I believe I heard her pipe up last night when I was talking to the gentleman from OHM that we've had 180 roughly?
I think we're close to 200, right?
Over 200.
Yeah.
Over 200 now responses. I asked Kim Littleton what he would expect, and he said he would expect probably 10% of the community to take the survey. So we're a long way from that. Sounds like we're just relying on social media and the city website. I suggested last night. I'm going to suggest to you if it hasn't been brought up. I think it would probably be cost-effective. It's an old-fashioned way. But send a postcard out. There's 3,000 homes, whatever, in London. What's it going to cost? Send the postcard out. Get the actual feedback. There's a lot of people that aren't on Facebook. They don't go to the city website all the time unless they need something. And I just think we can do a little bit better in trying to reach those people that haven't been on there yet. So I just wanted to throw that at you in case you guys bring that up in discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any...anyone else? All right.
Rex, do you have anything?
55 minutes. Thank you.
On to old business up for a third reading. Ordinance 184-24. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So move.
Second.
Ordinance 184-24, an ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area.
Brent, this is you.
Yes, this is the DORA we discussed earlier. I still think it's going to be a good thing.
Now, is there something you guys would like to amend, include?
Well, can we discuss that before we get to the point of amendment? Because I think there's a couple of points. As I brought up at the last meeting, I didn't know if there was an interest in moving, going down to the old hotel, but we don't know what's going in there. I think that's probably, if we're going to create the area, I think that we could create that too. We're already at the railroad tracks, and the other tracks are abandoned at this point. 99.9% of the time, they're not used. So I don't think...crossing the railroad tracks may be an issue, but we're already there. People are going to be right beside it. Jim's Bar is right there. It's going to be part of the DORA anyway. So I do want to just say I support that part if we're going to create it completely. The other thing that I brought up that I would like to at least have a discussion about is if we decide to limit those hours, instead of being 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. every day. Other places have more limited hours. I suggested. I'll suggest it again. My personal thought is Monday through Thursday from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00. Friday and Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then no DORA on Sundays unless exceptions are made by council. I'm worried. We don't have any clarifications. And I forgot to ask the Law Director, if we did what was suggested of 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week, I believe that we, as a council or the administration, can work with us to limit those hours, as I've suggested, at least for the first year and see how it works. And if you have a day...if you say no to Sundays, if there's an event that's going to be on Sunday, council can agree to extend that for the day, or we can change the hours moving forward. So I did want to bring that up as a discussion point. Then I also want to point out that the document we have here is not the correct document when it comes down to the locations listed because the American Legion was added. It's not on the one that's attached to this. But we did discuss it last meeting.
I have the correct one.
You have the correct one?
Yes.
Okay. And then just one further comment. I understand the concerns that Ms. Branson brought forth. However, my personal experience, it seems to be a social environment. And I think the hardcore drinkers stay in the bar. But I think people that want to go out and enjoy London, I think they'll do that, and they'll probably do that responsibly in most cases. Thank you.
So you want to make an amendment to...
Wait, Pat?
Being downtown and having a business down there for 22 years, I can...I can...I understand the timeframe and what Greg's talking about. But we also need to realize that a lot of people work third shift. And so their nighttime is 10, 11:00 a.m. They come down. It's like...it's like their dinnertime. And then they have a couple of drinks. They come through the carryout, go to gyms, whatever, in the morning, and then go home, and they go to bed, and then they get up and go to work at 10:00 or midnight or whatever they do. And that's...there's more than people think, is all I would say.
Make an amendment to extend this?
Michael's...
Hold on, just a second. I do have a question because Elizabeth, what was your last name? Branson. Ms. Branson did bring up some pretty good...she brought some pretty good statistics with her. Have we...during this process, have we looked at other Doras and did a comparison of before the DORA, after the DORA? Is...was that part of this process?
Getting statistics, no, we have not, but we've talked to people. Eve went to Hilliard and talked to people about the Dora.
Right.
I've, every time I'm in a Dora, I talk to people about it. You know, and I completely understand what Ms. Branson is saying also, you know, but this isn't going to be, just because there's a Dora, you know, people are still going to be down there in bars and the restaurants and things drinking. So.
And then my other question is, is can we, in the future, if we find that this isn't working for us, will this be able to be retracted?
Yeah, I would assume so.
I would. Okay.
Any other?
I would like to make an amendment to extend it past the tracks to the hotel.
I'll second that.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
No.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Well, I'll do this in the form of motion. I move that we change the hours of operation from 11:00 a.m. every day to 10:00 p.m. every day, seven days a week, to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday, and no doors on Sunday. That will be my motion to change that.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
No.
Ms. Trainer?
No.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
I need the hours one more time. Monday through Thursday is 4:00 to 10:00.
Yep.
And Friday and Saturday is 10:00 to 11:00.
11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. as was originally posted.
And no Sunday.
Yes.
Okay.
That's my request for an amendment.
That's a tough one.
Next year, if the council decides we need to extend those hours, you can change that. What are council's wishes on this ordinance?
Moved it on. Second.
So this has been amended, we've amended the hours, and we've extended it out, correct?
Yes.
No.
Was that a no?
No.
Sorry, couldn't hear. Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 184-24 has passed. Onto second reading, Resolution 185-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Resolution 185-24, a resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds. The street department is in need of a new dump truck.
Oh yeah, this is for the street department?
Yes.
For the new dump truck that's in much need. It's the basics of why we tax people, fix the roads, so.
How many trucks will we have, we purchased this one, that are in use?
Not enough.
Because it seems like we just bought a truck within the last year or two. Are we?
That was a?
Different truck?
Different. Yeah, I think that was a tandem axle truck.
Yeah, the trucks that were purchased previously are mains, ones that can be used on main arteries. This would be ones that could hit the side roads whenever we get the main arteries open, and we could start doing the side roads. That's what this is for, tight places, so forth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Will this have the plow with it, and everything, it'll be equipped?
He's planning on having, using it for pushing snow, so yes.
Okay.
And does the price include all the bells and whistles to do that, or is that going to be something down the road we're going to have to add on to it?
He should be able to pay for the accessories out of his own budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussions?
I'd make a motion since December is next month, and winter's coming close, if we bypass three reading rule on this.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
No.
Ms. Trainer?
No.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 184-24 has passed. Onto second reading, Resolution 185-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Resolution 185-24, a resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds. The street department is in need of a new dump truck.
Oh yeah, this is for the street department?
Yes.
For the new dump truck that's in much need. It's the basics of why we tax people, fix the roads, so.
How many trucks will we have, we purchased this one, that are in use?
Not enough.
Because it seems like we just bought a truck within the last year or two. Are we?
That was a?
Different truck?
Different. Yeah, I think that was a tandem axle truck.
Yeah, the trucks that were purchased previously are mains, ones that can be used on main arteries. This would be ones that could hit the side roads whenever we get the main arteries open, and we could start doing the side roads. That's what this is for, tight places, so forth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Will this have the plow with it, and everything, it'll be equipped?
He's planning on having, using it for pushing snow, so yes.
Okay.
And does the price include all the bells and whistles to do that, or is that going to be something down the road we're going to have to add on to it?
He should be able to pay for the accessories out of his own budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussions?
I'd make a motion since December is next month, and winter's coming close, if we bypass three reading rule on this.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
No.
Ms. Trainer?
No.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
No.
Ms. Trainer?
No.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Resolution 187-24 has passed. Onto new business, Resolution 188-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second. Resolution 188-24, a resolution increasing appropriations. The police department is in need of a new server.
As Mr. Michael C. Norman, because we're all confused when we see emails from Michael Norman, trying to figure out where they're from. So, Michael C. Norman suggested earlier, when he talked to the police department, they are in need of a server. This, its hit, its usefulness, lifespan of its usefulness, this will be transferred to the new police department, and that is built, assuming that that's done in a timely manner. There is an emergency clause on this, and the money is within the budget, just needs to be appropriated. So, I move that we suspend the rules to 188-24.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yep.
And I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Resolution 188-24 has passed. Onto Resolution 189-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second. Resolution 189-24, a resolution increasing appropriations. The tax refunds have exceeded the original budget.
So this was a overlap between the prior firm that was helping the city pay its income tax withholding, and their transition to a payroll service such as ADP, resulting in the duplication of some withholding payments that the city paid, ended up paying twice. So they have exceeded their budget by that duplicated amount. Both this resolution and the following are to repay the various departments that erroneously over withheld tax payments.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I believe they are back in, in need of those funds.
Well, they might be by the end of the year, right? And this would run past the end of the year, so we?
Yes.
They're asking this money to be re-appropriated back so that they're not without the money until the end of the year.
Correct. And like I said, this was a, just a, this is money that shouldn't have come out of their budget line item to begin with, so make a motion to suspend three readings.
Second.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yep.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Resolution 189-24 has passed. Onto Resolution 190-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second. Resolution 190-24, a resolution increasing appropriations. The tax refunds have exceeded the original budget.
This is the exact same problem, except a different department. This is, the fire department has, the same problem, had the taxes overpaid, duplicated by mistake, need to put that money back in their budget line item. And a motion to suspend, please, they need this money.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Moved it down.
Second.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
I'm just slowing this thing down, just for Pat. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's? Mr. McDaniel?
Why, yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Resolution 190-24 has passed. Onto Resolution 191-24. Got a motion to read by title and number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 191-24, a resolution increasing appropriations to comply with the next phase of the contract for the architecture of the police building.
Uh, exactly what it sounds like, they're onto the next phase. This is, um, I'm trying to review my notes here. I believe this was relative to, oh, the, um, let me not tell you, hold on a second. Uh, so, um... This is, um, a construction manager has been selected to work with the architect. Both entities are at a phase now that work on the police building will stop if they have to wait for these funds to come through. This is a motion essentially to borrow $460,000 from the general fund in order to cover design elements, environmental studies that are required to occur. This also would allow the architect and the construction manager to complete certain technical drawings. The, uh, there is a request for emergency funding in order to prevent work stoppage.
And by borrowing, it was explained that when the federal, when the loan or the grant comes through, that this money would be repaid back to the general fund out of those funds.
That's correct. That's my understanding as well.
But if we wait for the other funds to come in, it won't get started till next fall.
Uh, it won't get started till they have money.
Right.
So, this is a loan from ourselves to ourselves.
All right.
Does it have emergency clause?
Yes, there's emergency.
Yes.
And a motion, I'm gonna make a motion to suspend three readings.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Who'd you say?
Mr. Hayes?
Oh, okay. Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Ms. Trainor?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Moved her down.
Second.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Ms. Trainor?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Resolution 191-24 has passed. Onto Resolution 192-24. Got a motion to read by title and number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 192-24, a resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds. The basketball courts and skate park need to be milled and filled.
So, this is just what it sounds like. It's to mill down the skate park and basketball courts and then resurface those areas there. Cracked pretty good and some wide cracks and, uh, like to fix up those areas. And the amount appropriation is $75,000.
Is this something that you think will get done this fall?
I think the plan was for them to have the money appropriated and then, uh, was it, it was early spring, maybe they can go into contract, but I don't think this was anticipated to occur before winter.
That, yeah, that's pretty much correct. No, no, you won't have to reappropriate because we're gonna put it into the parks, park, Parks and Playground Fund, right? So, it's gonna go in Parks and Playground Fund, so then, that money will roll over into next year, and then, once we know people are starting to get their projects together for the summer, we can get out there and get a bid and get it done before summer hits. So, we're just trying to plan ahead a little bit.
Is this would be something we'll have to bid on?
Yeah.
So, Shannon, do you have your notes there?
Yeah.
Um, I believe, I just want to verify, uh, this was the recommend, recommendation of the rec director and the street superintendent, and also the service committee had already discussed this. It's their recommendation that this happen. I believe the original amount asked for was 125,000, does that sound right?
135.
Pardon me?
135.
135,000. So, we had a discussion and decided that they have about 130,000 in their account. We didn't want to drain their account completely. That's how we came to the decision of $75,000, put that in there now. They'll still have some money in their account if something else comes up too.
Yeah, and this was for both the skate park and the basketball courts at Mary Mac. Those are typically two different projects, but would be lumped together in order to try to get maybe a, a group discount. This, again, is just a motion to transfer so that the mon, the, that money is in their budget, so that they can get a jump on whenever is, whenever it's appropriate in the, after the thaw, to work on outdoor services.
And although it has the emergency clause, it doesn't have to pass tonight, I don't believe. They just, they just wanted to transfer before the end of the year.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
So, it can stay.
Okay, on to Resolution 193-24. Got a motion to read by title and number.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 193-24, an ordinance for strengths on job descriptions.
So, this is gonna do a few things. First, it's, uh, first and foremost, it was gonna allow for the fire department to have a supervisor on duty at both stations. The actual cost difference between having an officer in charge or officer of the day and the actual lieutenant was gonna be there was, if, if I'm not mistaken, was only like $700 a year difference to do that, because it was a very minimal pay difference between the two. If you're the officer of the day, you get a pay bump, almost to what the lieutenant's pay would be. So, there's, the first thing that it'll do is allow for that to happen. It's also gonna remove the references for employees of the water and sanitary sewer depart, sanitary sewer departments, which we no longer have. So, those will be off of the strength ordinance moving forward. This is not an emergency.
No, no emergency necessary. This is just cleanup language, so that once, um, contracts are approved, that they can maintain staffing without running afoul of the ordinances.
Any other discussion, or council wishes?
We go on.
Okay. On to...
194.
Resolution 194-24. Got a motion to read by title and number.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 194-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 230-23 to reflect a range of salaries of department heads and non-union personnel.
So, since department heads and non-union personnel are not given raises automatically, this is a me-too action to allow those to have raises, and thus, uh, they would be paid more than their employees. You don't really want your police chief being paid less than his sergeants, for, as an example. These raises are not guaranteed. It's up to council to decide to approve the amount, percentages, uh, and if you look, and I don't think, I think this is the first time that this has happened, I could be wrong. This is gonna put raises in place, if you look at the document for 20, 2025, 2026, and 2027, which that mirrors what the contracts are for three years. It mirrors the percentage of 6%, 4%, 4%. That's the contract that's already, the ASME contract, that's already been approved. It's also gonna come up in a minute on the fire department contract, I believe they have the same number, so, uh, they've mirrored that, but it's up to, up to council whether or not you want to approve that percentage, it's also up to council if you want to approve a three-year plan or not.
So, we, we don't have to do a three-year plan, is that what you're saying?
I don't believe so. I mean, it's, it's that way now, we can amend it just a single year, but that's, that's council's wishes. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew, I don't think, John, do you remember any time in the past that this has been three years at a time, or Josh?
Normally, it's every year.
Every year? Yeah, that's what I thought.
But almost if, if you do the three years, you do it the same time as everybody else, as well.
True.
Did you have something?
Yeah, some of you might have been on council when we, you know, tried to get the gap between employees and the department heads, because we started to see that there would be an issue where someone could not be a department head and have all that responsibility and be very close to department head money, so we were able to increase that. And since then, we've been keeping that gap by giving, or adjusting these to the same amount, same percentage as the union contract. So, this year, we just said, you know, it's gonna be 644, so we should, you know, to make it easy, we'll just do 644 and make sure that we keep that gap there. So, it will entice people to want to work towards being a department head and get paid accordingly for that. We just thought it would make it easier.
Yeah. Yeah, this is the first time we've done all three, but, you know, if you don't do all three, we'll come back next year and try to get a four, um, because we want to keep that gap.
And it doesn't change the process, it'll, it'll still, if I'm a department head, all it, all it's changing is the range.
Yeah.
I'm still gonna be reviewed every year.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
It's not gonna be an automatic...
It doesn't automatically mean you go to the top. Nope.
But if you're not making that minimal amount, like from 24 to 25, and then at 26, you're not making that minimal amount down there, will you automatically be increased whether your performance deserves it or not?
If you're at the minimum amount, is that your question?
Yeah, like, like...
Yeah, if you were at the minimum amount and then it went up 6%, you would stay, you would go to the minimum amount. I mean, you, you wouldn't be in that pay range no more, so yeah. I mean, theoretically, I don't think we have anybody on that low. And then also, this helps if anybody leaves that our pay range is from here to here, right? And it can help entice people to want to come here and be a department head, or, you know, or, or like I said, have someone move up internally.
And as, this, this is not, is this changing the floor, not just the top end?
It changed, yeah, it changes both.
It changes the floor, so it's six, so it would be 6% applied to the, to the floor and to the top end, correct?
Correct.
And our tax director, according to this document, could be paid as little as $11,414?
Huh?
Have they never changed the floor for that?
Oh, yeah, we can, we can figure that out, that number, and amend that for you. That's when, um, when we didn't have a tax director.
Okay.
And, and there was talks of a part-time in this and that, so... And just like any piece of legislation, you could pass a three-year, and next year come back and say, no, we want to lower it. I mean, right? But we just thought this would make it easier on council, just knock them all out at once and line it up with the union contracts.
And although it has an emergency clause, you don't have to pass it tonight, it's gonna be in effect for 2025.
Correct. That's why we put the emergency on there, so we could make sure that it'd be done by the end of the year.
So, if you want time to think about it and look it over.
I thought 8:05 was gonna make it easy on council, tonight.
He's still got 20 minutes, we're, we're getting there.
Okay, on to Resolution 195-24. Got a motion to read by title and number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 195-24, resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into collective bargaining agreement between the City of London and the London Firefighters' Local 3509IAM.
Yep. I'm not sure. This is, uh, I believe we are done, um, the negotiate, or the contracts are circulated. Um, let's see. I'll just do the contract.
Yeah, what, yeah, so, one, once we, they signed off on it, I think the next day, I sent you guys, as soon as I could, the, the two contracts, the clean version, as well as the one that shows what the changes were. So, I think you've had those, I don't know, maybe a week. I, I can't remember, when did I, was it this week I sent them out?
No, I think it was in the last week.
Yeah, I think it was last week. I tried to get them out as soon as possible, because I know you guys like to read through them.
Uh, this was, uh, again, negotiations resulted in the 644% increases over the next few years, similar with ASME and the resolution that we just discussed with our individual.
I, for one, did look through that, didn't go line by line, but it appears there's very few changes overall, other than the rates. Little bit of language here and there, maybe on sick time or maternity leave.
Yeah, that, yeah, there, eh, there's very small changes, just like the ASME contract, it's, we, we've been able to do a couple contracts so far through my administration, and a lot of that stuff's kind of gotten, that's why they've been able to go so smoothly. We've gotten a lot of things cleaned up, so we can just, it's just a few things here and there that we, that we kind of find out or need to change or whatever, so very, very small changes. The biggest thing is the 644.
We need to have this done by the end of the year.
Yeah, 30 days, and if we don't ratify it, it automatically ratifies.
Right, and I believe you still could do the next meeting, if, if you prefer to. I'm trying to think when it...
Yeah, we should be good.
Yeah, 'cause it was, when did I send you guys that email? Yeah, yeah, you guys should be able to go one more, one more reading, right?
I don't know why.
I don't remember.
Me too.
Just with the ASME contract, uh...
We, we left it on for a me, a reading, I believe.
Okay, on to Resolution 196-24. Got a motion to read by title and number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 196-24, resolution adopting the recommendations of the planning commission.
Is that it?
Yes.
196. There it is. All right, uh, yeah, so, this is coming to us after getting approved by the planning commission. According to my notes, there was a public hearing at the planning commission, and no one appeared to voice any kind of opposition, although there were some interested parties in attendance. Final plan for Phase 3 was approved on this project. Is there a public hearing scheduled on this?
Yes.
Yeah, so this one, are also scheduled, public hearing on December 19th of this year. No emergency clause, obviously.
Did you say this was for Phase 3 or Phase 4?
Um, I can say Phase...
Is this for Phase 4?
Phase 4.
Oh, but maybe it was Phase 4. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The final plan was approved for Phase 3. This is a preliminary plan for Phase 4. My bad.
Can I ask, um, so Phase, Phase 3 is, was approved and it's been done, do we have any kind of numbers on, uh, the populated, uh, the houses that have been built and how fast they've sold? Are they pretty much sold out there, or what kind of percentage are we talking?
We see it up.
Come on down. Wes Smith, I'm the owner's representative for the owners, Paul Gross and Tom Coglan and Nick Coglan. The question was, do we, so Phase 3 has not started construction yet.
Okay.
Right, so that was recently approved, we're gonna start construction on that here in the next week and a half. As far as Phase 2 is concerned, Arbor Homes is the builder for that, and they can't build them fast enough. They want to get into Phase 3 as quickly as they can, and they're excited to get into Phase 4. So, um, they are moving very quickly through Phase 2 right now. You know, average sales price is $350,000 and above. I mean, as far as the number of people in each home, I don't know the exact number in, in each home.
Right.
You know, single families usually average somewhere around three per house, three, four, somewhere around there, so...
So, when you say they're, can't build them fast enough, is that they, they're, uh...
Because they're so...
They're sold?
Because they're sold, because there's such a high demand for them.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I just, yeah, 'cause you can build them, but if nobody buys them...
They can't build them fast enough, 'cause they're, they're selling them like, like hotcakes.
Do you have any sense of whether there is a lot of people that are relocating from
other parts within London, or are they coming into the county as...
So, so, what we found is about 84% of the people that are coming into London, London Landing is from outside of the county.
I, I would also add, if you guys have not been out there, I drive, you know, I live, you know, in the front park, and when I go out, um, it's amazing, every time you drive back there, it's something new, and, you know, people are talking about who's moving in, also, you know, what's, what is it doing for our economy? I can, I could tell you from Halloween that they do have disposable cash out there, because about five or 10 of them gave out full-size candy bars. So, there is some disposable cash out there. And, and I was pretty amazed that, you know, if, if you're a bit trick-or-treating, when the full-size candy bars are out, every kid that walks away, they just, hey, this is those full-size candy bars. So, there's a little disposable cash back there.
Full-size candy bars is a new high mark.
Wes, how many homes have been sold?
Um...
Or occupied at this point?
So, I believe that Phase, Phase 1, or Phase 2, I should say, or Phase 1, um, I think there's one home left in Phase 1. Phase 2, I believe, I don't know the exact number, but I think that they are almost completely sold out of, of Phase 2 at this point, so...
I think Phase 1, they're building the last, last lot.
What's that?
They're building a home on that last lot of Phase 1.
Correct, yeah. Correct. Yeah.
And can you, can you verify the, the phase three, wasn't that a smaller bundle of houses that, that was approved?
Yeah.
It was like up in a corner?
Phase three was 70 lots.
Okay.
That was recently approved. And then phase four has 74 lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, phase four, is there a road that goes off the 56th then?
Correct.
Through the...
There will be now.
Bowling alley.
Yeah, through the bowling alley. That's, that's the bowling alley one. And I, I believe that was based upon a previous requirement.
Yes.
Yeah, with the traffic study.
All right.
Any more discussion on this? Again, public hearing on this will be December 19.
Do you have the addresses for those full-size candy bars?
Yeah.
It was crazy.
Can you put that in the auditor's website?
Yeah.
This house.
I told, I told him, I said, I'm going to, I'm going to use that fact when people ask about the economic impact of these new houses coming in. Hey, full-size candy bars, it's not cheap.
It's a big deal.
Not today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Wes.
Thank you.
On to resolution 197-24. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 197-24, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a collection agreement with the Ohio Attorney Generals. The city has delinquent debts that they are unable to collect.
So I'm going to address this and I'm hoping Shannon pulls up her notes because I don't have complete notes on this. Currently, if we have people that don't pay their taxes, there's quite a process the city attorney has to go through to go after that. Our tax department gets involved. The Ohio Attorney General already has a team of people set up to do this. I don't remember their, they do charge a percentage.
10.
And I don't remember what that was.
10%.
But the city would not be out of, out of debt or would not have any debt for that. They just take it from the collections that, that they get. And they have the opportunity. The city does not. If somebody refuses to pay, the state, the state will just go get their federal tax returns and take money out of that. Or maybe it's just the state tax returns. I don't remember that either exactly. But the attorney general has the authority to attach to those to get our money if they don't pay their delinquent tax bills. Shannon, can you add to that, please?
Yeah, so currently it's pretty labor-intensive. The tax director signs a complaint indicating that there were delinquent taxes due. City law director has to go to small claims court. People have to show up, make their arguments. They enter an agreement. And it still does not involve any kind of collections enforcement. The OAG does have access to both state and federal refunds where they can, what they do is called, it's called a tax intercept. The OAG does collect a 10% finder's fee and then the balance, the 90% of the amount collected goes to the, to the city. It's a win-win. Most other municipalities have been operating under this agreement with the OAG for decades.
Move we suspend a three reading rule.
Oh, no, I got a question here.
There's actually no, there was no emergency request on this. We're not, we're not close to, the next time we're going to be filing unless it's before April. Got plenty of time. And I'm not sure what the mechanism is to get the city signed on with the OAG, but she specifically did not request that. There was a, a need for emergency access.
I have a couple of questions. First, what kind of caseload does our current city legal person, you know, how much of a caseload is this going to take off of her responsibility or their responsibility?
I mean, I can answer that. The, the number of, they tend to come in batches. So it's not like she's in court every week trying to collect small claims out of these people. But I'd say they probably round up 15 or 20 every couple of months and then just go through the whole rigmarole and just try to, you know, even though it's a, a city department, I do believe they have to incur fees to pay the filing fees in order to file the suit, in order to go, you know, take the time, process the paperwork, meet with the people that are the delinquent taxpayers, work out agreements if they can. But then again, you're left with no collections enforcement necessarily without incurring more time and more expense.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Free up the law director too, not just the tax department.
Oh, that's who I'm talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I was asking though. How much does it free up? And then my other question is, if, are you, if you're on the other side of this and the process that we have now, it sounds like our law director would get with, if, if Joe, Joe Smith was sitting out there and he had delinquent taxes, the first step would be our, our tax department would get ahold of him and say, hey, you're delinquent. And then ignore, ignore. Then the law director comes in, our local law director comes in at that point, correct? And then Joe Smith, they would have a meeting of the minds.
Or not.
Do we, or not, exactly. Or not. If we go with the Ohio Attorney General instead, does that process still stay in place? Will the, will the Ohio Attorney General then become, once the tax direct, tax director says this guy's delinquent, are they going to go through the same steps that our law director would go through and give that person an opportunity? Or are they just going to, you know, we're going to...
I'm not, not sure what the internal mechanism is. Typically, when you see these kinds of things that they, there's a process that you have to go through in order to have the, the delinquent tax certified as delinquent. And then once that's, that's an internal mechanism to our department. And then once that's certified to the satisfaction of the OAG, then there is no process. The process is, this has been certified delinquent, you've already had your opportunity to challenge the amount or the penalties or the interest or whatever it is. And that, once that amount has been certified, it's out for, for collection, for intercept. Now, there are headhunters the OAG does employ, so it's not always going to be internal to that office. But they have contracts with outside attorneys that would collect that same 10% finder's fee for any delinquent amounts actually that, you know, that they do now.
I'm just concerned that we're, I, I don't want to take a step away from the person that's, that has the delinquent tax. I don't want there to be a, a step missed where they don't have a chance to either make amends. Because it seems like right now, the way it works is tax director contacts them. For whatever reason, they can't resolve with the tax director, it goes to our law director and then they have a meeting of the minds or not, like you said.
Right.
But I'd like to, I, I just want to make sure that they still have those two chances.
Yeah, I think the, the tax intercept is only one of the collections enforcement tools that they have. They've got their whole toolbox and that includes setting up payment negotiate, you know, doing payment plans. They have all of the other things that the last, it's like the, the tool is the last resort is the, is the tax intercept. But it's one that the city does not have.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, on to round table. Michael.
Thanks for everyone who came out. I, I definitely appreciated more information on the Dora. She loved us, but Ms. Branson, did I say that right? Had some valid, valid points. I am a little bit concerned that we extended it past the, past the railroad tracks. We, like you said, we have, we have one that's nonexistent for the most. I just think, yeah, I'm not a drinker either. I do, I do appreciate the Dora that Hilliard has. I've been there several times. It's exactly like they said during the summer. They have a great concert series. It's a great atmosphere. But I have seen situations there where, you know, people were having a lot of fun and sometimes, you know, under the influence of alcohol, you step one foot this way or that way, you lose your balance, you fall. And I wouldn't want a situation where even if they weren't necessarily intoxicated, they were under the influence, fall, and we've got a, a problem with the train. So that's, that's why I voted no on the Dora. That's the only reason I voted no on the Dora. Had we kept it the way it was, I would have voted yes. I do appreciate that we did kind of bring in those, bring in those times during the week. But as I said, I learned a lot with the Dora. I agree with the mayor that there are people who work third shift. So 11 to, 11 to 2 is, is their evening. But like you said, we can go through and change that. So that's my spiel on the Dora. I'd like to say that, I don't know, we haven't had a meeting since the eyeball, the London, London eyeball. We had that. It was pretty successful. We hope to do it again next year. The mayor brought up the Palooza, pumpkin Palooza. It was the greatest thing that I think we've done in a while. There was a lot of people there. I, I ran, I've ran into people since then that didn't know about it. So next year, I hope we get it out more. But, I mean, it was great. I, I didn't realize we had that many children here in London. Just dress up in a lion suit and you'll find out how many we have. And then other than that, have a good weekend and we'll see you next time.
I think the door would be a great thing. It's like everything else. You have to watch it and everything, but I think it'll work out well. Even the way it is now, if we didn't add the other side, because we still got this side of the tracks. If somebody's going to do something stupid, they, let's hope that don't ever happen. And I just want to say, when I, I was in the hospital the other day, came out, I noticed all that done. I said, I don't remember us approving painting all. And then the mayor told tonight what happened because it really looks nice. It just, it's outstanding. And like I said, it costs a lot of money, I'm sure. It's nice to have nice gifts. I want to thank them. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Shannon?
Old-fashioned Christmas is well underway. We've got a lot of new activities in store. We've got some signage that's about to go out. That is scheduled to occur on December 1st, which is a Sunday, from 2:00 to 7:00, 2:00 in the afternoon to 7:00 in the evening. Such activities will include lots of photo opportunities. McDonald's will have the reindeer, have a historic fire truck. There's going to be a vendor village, a tree lighting ceremony, other lighting ceremonies. Lots and lots of shops are opening their doors for engagement. And then we'll have a elf on the shelf. Hide and seek and find. So mark your calendars. It's going to be bigger and better than ever.
Thank you. Andy?
I have nothing.
Rich?
Okay, I'll go quick. I want to thank all city employees for jobs well done. We have an 11-0 football team in town in the playoffs. I'd like to see the stadium filled tomorrow night with Red Raider fans. I mean, fill it, fill it, fill it. If you can't get there, listen to us on 105 FM. We'll be bringing play-by-play in the color to you. We got our country back Tuesday. We got our country back. And I think that is, the way things are going to take off, I think interest rates are going to go down. Gas is going to be cheap. Things are going to get better. And I look for a booming to come to London, housing boom. I look for a boom all over town. So I'm really excited about that. Veterans Day, thank a veteran. If you just only walk up and say thank you, shake his hand. If you're someplace, buy his meal for him. That won't, that won't hurt you a bit. But they lay their life on the line and a lot of times they give their life. And they're a precious commodity. And so take good care of them. Safety meeting Tuesday night, 13th in the conference room, as far as I know right now, 6:00 PM. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Well, before all this booming, now that we have this door, my biggest concern is somebody tripping over the rotten sidewalks downtown. So we need to get, start getting them fixed. And that's, I think, to everybody for coming out. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Greg?
I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's good to see people out here again tonight and have some input on the things we do. But mostly, I want to thank my father for serving. I want to thank my grandfather for serving. And I want to thank Josh McDaniels for paying the ultimate sacrifice when he served. And it was very, it was very touching for this community what happened after that. There was a big display. But I don't want to forget those that lost their lives, nor do I want to forget Josh McDaniels. Brent didn't bring it up, but Josh was my son's best friend. So I never forget it.
Amen. Nor should be any of us forget it.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
He's three minutes late.
Is that on anything?
What?
Is that on it?
You're welcome.
I didn't.
We're going to see it in the paper tomorrow.